Let's all stand.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Potomac Elementary. Great job with the song. All right, now we have a recognition by the 2023 Space Camp Scholarships.
Good evening, Dr. Boyd and our members of the school board. It is my pleasure to come before you tonight as the chairperson of the King George Education Foundation Space Camp Scholarship Committee. Tonight, I would like to recognize the 12 students who completed the application process this year. The application for Space Camp consists of designing a mission patch, writing a description about the design, writing about the goals they wish to accomplish within the next 10 years, and writing about why they wish to attend Space Camp. Students also have to get letters of recommendation from staff members and parents. The Space Camp Committee had a very difficult task reviewing all of our applications and scoring them, and after much deliberation, we were able to select a winner for our Broadwood Space Camp Scholarship, which includes tuition and airfare to Huntsville, Alabama, as well as a winner for the Harrison Space Camp Scholarship, which is able to provide tuition for Space Camp this year. As the chairperson for the King George Education Foundation, I would also like to recognize Mark and Sherri Bradshaw, who have provided funding for the Broadwood Space Camp Scholarship, and John and Brandy Harrison, who were able to provide funding for the Harrison Scholarship. All of the work for organizing this application process and reviewing and scoring all of our applications has been done largely in part by the elementary school STEM teachers and accomplished outside of school hours. And I'd like to thank them for being willing to meet over Thanksgiving break to make our selections. So without further ado, we would like to recognize all of our applicants and our two winners for this year. Our first applicant was Logan Rikado. If you are here, please come forward. And we'll have you stand up front. We'll get a photo with everybody at the end. Samuel Donaldson. Emma Donaldson. And Emma Donaldson. Mason Eddy. Silas Franklin. Hayden Himes. Emmeline Morales. Millie Gross Torres Romero. Kaylee Zirker. Elizabeth Branch, our winner of the Harrison Scholarship. Elizabeth. And Sarah Zook, the winner of our Broadwood Scholarship. Again, I would like to thank all of you for all of your hard work in the application process and congratulate our winners. We're very much looking forward to finding out what you learn at Space Camp and bring back to share with all of the other students here in King George County Schools. Thank you. Yes, if we could have all of our donors, please come forward for our photo.
One guys.
Thank you.
Thank you again, everyone.
And thank you and congratulations to all the winners. Well done. Well done. Let's give them another round of applause. All right, next we have public or employee comments. Do we have any?
We have one.
All right. All right, we have one public comment from Mary McDowney. And if you would come to the mic and Mrs. McDowney, please remember that it's limited to three minutes, and if you would state your name and what district you come from, and then the three minutes will begin. Thank you for coming forward.
I'm Mary Virginia McDowney, and I live in King George, and I work at the King George, I mean, Sylston Elementary School in King George County. The reason why I'm here, I started subbing in January 2019, way pre-pandemic, before the pandemic started. I was here on that Friday the 13th, the last day of school at Sylston, getting ready for the book fair. I came back in January when most of the teachers would not come to school. The subs were there to teach the kids. I've been there every day since then at the school year, but yet you all decided that the subs were not worthy or needed of the pandemic money. Now, according to the fiscal year 2000, it's a fiscal year from the governor. Your language is the fiscal year 2023 state budget, and your language is two total different languages who would get paid. And I don't, as far as a lot of us are subs, every year I have to sign up to sub, whether I want to come back or not. Now, I do hold a dual position. I can either be a sub or substitute nurse. I've taught everything from preschool to teaching business in college, so I'm well qualified. But Jeff, you all saw fit that the subs weren't worthy of getting the money, that we were so well required. A lot of subs, teachers who just started this year, were even here during the pandemic, and they were given $1,000 because they started, I guess, August of this year. But this is my fifth year subbing, and maybe my last year. It's just the point of not getting the money, but do you think my worth is? Just the point of y'all figured that we weren't worthy of it for some reason. But I'm here every day teaching y'all's kids, the kids here every year, and I've not wavered. I didn't want a full-time, long-term, because I'm almost 70 years old, and if I want to stay home one day and put my feet up, I think I deserve it. I've done my 20 years of Madison and 20 of Intel. So I did not want a long-term position this year. I took one last year. But a lot of subs are not happy with King George County, but I know Wes Morland, all of their subs got the money. That was your language on how you all gave that money. That's not the state's language. A girlfriend of mine who works for VCU gave me what they gave with the part-time guy, $650, but you gave them $500. So that's all I wanted to say, and I don't think it's fair. Whether I sub next year, I don't know. Because you all think we're not worthy of it. I don't feel that you all feel that we're worthy of it. My lungs are just as well as anybody else's lungs. And I've been well-educated. I got a master's degree. It's not that I'm not educated, but I decided not to want to do another full-time 20 years for nobody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McDowney. You make some points and, right, miss, and we will look at those. Thank you very much. All right, do we have any recommendation for changes to the agenda? And I would like to add a Budget Advisory Committee discussion under Discussion Items, Budget Advisory Committee. Just a discussion about the possibility. All right, now we have, I want to make sure there's no other changes. All right, now we have the presentation, records presentation. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. Vance, are you able to pull that up? Okay, so if you can draw your attention to the screen, I get the opportunity this evening to talk about a topic that's not all that exciting. It's record retention and storage. However, it's one that is very important, most certainly if you are a graduate of King George County Schools. So, next line, John. Taking a look at the document that guides us as far as our responsibilities for record retention. We've got some verbiage here from the Library of Virginia Record Retention and Disposition Schedule. School divisions are required to keep certain school records for 75 years. These include the programs of studies for the last 75 years, and they include the course catalog and graduation requirements. Also, student cumulative files, which include the transcript, academic and attendance records, diploma type, must also be kept and maintained for 75 years after the student graduates, transfers, or withdrawals from King George County Schools. King George County Schools actually has records that date back to the 1930s for King George County Schools and also for Ralph Bunch Schools. So you can imagine, that is a lot and a lot and a lot and a lot of paper. So if you take a look at the next slide, for many, many, many years, this is how we've kept up with the requirement for 75-plus years of records, student records, and programs of studies and the other ones that I just mentioned there. So, taking a look at the next slide, you'll see the Library of Virginia Record Storage Requirements, which is a very important list of expectations that the Library of Virginia has for public entities. And I'm just going to go through those quickly. Storage areas should conform to certain environmental and security conditions. Environmental conditions include climate and humidity controlled and the presence of an appropriate fire suppression system. Because a sprinkler system currently does not exist in the school board building, we can use to satisfy this requirement UL Class 350 Fireproof filing cabinets, which are quite expensive, which I'll cover here shortly. Records must be reasonably protected from water and storm damage, meaning that they should be off the ground. The records should be safe from insects and vermin. And a secure area with controlled and documented access are also required for confidential and privacy-protected records. All of this falls under the requirements of public entities through the Library of Virginia. So we've got a couple options right now. As you can see, if you think back to that last picture of the file cabinets filling the rooms, we're really running short on space, and really some of those file cabinets are not up to the expectation of the Library of Virginia. So we've reached out and spoken to some other school divisions. We've talked to some companies that work in this line of business, and we've actually found out there's a state contract. I'll go through some of those considerations. On the left, if we were to continue to store hard copies with the expectations that the Library of Virginia have, estimates for a UL Class 350 Fireproof filing cabinet ranges anywhere between 3,000 and 5,000 per unit. So these are those heavy-duty filing cabinets that are lined with almost like a concrete-like material, fireproof, you know, maybe like a gun case or something like that, if you can think along those lines. Based on the current storage requirements we have of 75 years of records for Ralph Bunch Schools and King George County Schools, in order to get us up to par with that, we would need 148 of those units ranging between $3,000 and $5,000. We've got about three quotes on those. So the total cost ranging between $444,000 or $740,000, not to mention quite a bit of space needed to keep those heavy, heavy filing cabinets. Over on the right-hand side, you'll see what many and most schools and school divisions in Virginia are doing now, storing digital copies. And I'll go through quickly. I've got for you guys a copy of the state contract, which is, all of these, if you want to pass them down, managed by a company called DOMA Technologies, which you'll see there in the quote. And the quote goes through much more detail, but in essence, what you'll see on that right-hand side of the slide is, the way they do this is they would schedule two record transports. If you read through this document, they are very secure, very safe, very organized. Trips where they come up and gather your records and take them to their facility. They're located just outside of Virginia Beach. And they estimate, based on the number of records that we have expressed to them that we have, it would be about two trips at $1,300 apiece. They estimate 2,000, or excuse me, 2,242,500 student records and 460,000 personnel records digitized at a rate of .0638 cents per record totaling $184,580.75. Using this subscription service, we would have to subscribe to a DX software annually at a cost of $2,400, which would make the total cost of digitizing the records and storing them in digital form far less than the hard copy option on the left-hand side at $189,580.75. And so, I've kind of explained some of the background there. I won't read that again. And I do want to reference that last paragraph in the background. In speaking with the Virginia Department of Education concerning the ARP and ESER funds, they may be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. And because the digitizing of records makes available needed, the digitizing of record would make space available and provides access to these records from multiple locations, just not within the school division or at the school board office. This use of funds for ESER funds qualifies. King George County School staff has reviewed our existing ESER expenditures against the ESER budgeted allocations to target the funds available for this project. And the superintendent's recommendation is, I would like to recommend that we leverage ARP/ESER funds in the amount of $189,580.75 to contract with the state contract with DOMA Technologies to migrate, convert, and digitize King George County Schools' records, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Any questions?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Boyd, I, one question. So in the estimate that's provided, what, I may have missed it, but what will be the final disposition of our records? Are we paying for them? Are they going to dispose of them after they're digitized? Are they going to be returned to us?
Yes, they could dispose of them after they're digitized. They can also provide us a hard digital copy. So we would and should prescribe to the digital service. It's very easy to access their software and access records. But at the same time, we also have our own hard copy, discopy of all of the records that we would forfeit to them.
But the paper copies they'll dispose of?
Yes.
That's all. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Rose?
I see the cost, the trips to transport. I'm assuming that's just because we have so many now, but how would that work going forward? Will we be able to just, as we produce more records each year, will we be able to mail those down to be scanned and included?
Yes, or you and I could take a trip to Virginia Beach. Yes, that's correct. It wouldn't take $1,300 per trip for two trips in the future. That's for that large amount of initial download. So every year, we would probably, a fraction of this number of records would have to be scanned every year following this initial large download.
So for the $2,400, that's only the software? I mean, does that include storage, digital storage of everything?
On that software, yes.
Okay, and so there would be also an additional cost for scanning new documents each year, I suppose?
Yes, at that same rate.
Okay.
Yeah, which would be far less, given the fact that it would be only one senior graduating class and some personnel records, a very small fraction compared to that initial amount of records that we would have to download.
Okay, I guess the last suggestion to have, look at the total here, it looks like it's, that only includes everything right here. So it doesn't include that extra $500 to have our own offline hard copy?
Correct. That's a separate cost listed in the quote.
So I guess to save our records going back 90 years, I think $500 bucks would be an excellent idea.
Understood.
Yeah, but didn't you say, Dr. Boyd, that we have a copy, a digitized copy of everything already?
Not, no, not currently. They would digitize all of our records right now. And what Mr. Rose is referring to is in this quote, they will give you a disk, I'll say. It's not on a disk anymore.
Whatever.
But they will give you a copy of your digital records. Every time you ask them for that large file, it's a $500 charge. We wouldn't need, we would do that one time, and then possibly, I mean, we could do it once a year, but it would be a much smaller amount of records.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir, I do. Part of my responsibilities over the years has been in that very room, going through a lot of those records, looking, spending a lot of time. And I'm absolutely in favor, 1,000% of going to digitization, if that's a word. However, knowing that the Ralph Bunch Association is working on restoring that building and the museum, both the County Historical Society and the county, several organizations within the county might be interested, having seen those records. We have original Ralph Bunch diplomas in there. We've got some very, I think perhaps the 1930s is maybe too early to say it's historic, but it will be. And I have concerns about those hard copies going away. And I don't have an answer about where to put them, but I think before we destroy those records, we need to contact the Ralph Bunch Association and the Advisory Committee working with Ralph Bunch to see if there's a possibility of either pulling out or selection or storage. I mean, there are records from the old Shiloh School there. There are records from schools that most folks in King George don't even know existed. So I have a real hard time with destroying those paper copies.
Understood. That's certainly a consideration we can make moving forward.
Yeah, so they would take them, and if this is true, that we would want those hard copies back, or maybe Ralph Bunch or whatever would want them back, then they would give those copies back to us.
They can do that, yes. And they talked to us in depth about how it's a very, it's like an armored vehicle that comes and picks these records up. It's a GPS-tracked vehicle that they will check for the entire route. It's a very secure process. But to Mrs. Hawk's question, we certainly can request the records back and keep a selection or any number of those records, as long as we find an area to store them. And also with that, and I know it's not the same, but I'll make the point anyways, with the software, we can make hard copies in the future of any record that anyone may need.
Yeah, if I can make a comment, I think Mrs. Hawk is concerned that, you know, if these are truly historical documents, then they would probably, I'm just thinking Ralph Bunch would want the originals. So I think that's the biggie, and it may even cost money for them to bring them back to us. But maybe according to Mrs. Hawk's suggestion, could you talk to the advisory committee of Ralph Bunch? And then also, I don't know, anybody else they need to talk to?
The Historical Society, King George Historical Society.
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, if you talk to both of those at least, that would be good. All right, also, we can talk about it future, but obviously that'll probably cost some money if they're going to record those and then bring them back. So if you could also get a cost from DOMA, what it would cost for them to take specific records and then give them back to us? If you could come up with a cost for that, Dr. Boyd, for next time? All right, any other questions? Who would answer your hand up? No? Anything else?
So just to be sure, Mr. Chair, you would like me to update the quote and come back at our next school board meeting to request a motion to approve?
No, I think, well, I think we can approve this right here if it's the board's wishes, but I'm just saying for this extra cost, because this is more a discussion right now than it is in action. And that would be a separate fee, and how much would that fee be for them to simply return some of the documents? And the, don't add it to this quote, no.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I guess my only comment would be it's probably simpler to have a total cost if you're expecting an adjustment. So if you want to get an adjusted quote on the fee for, like, you know, divvying up records returning to us, I would recommend just waiting until an adjusted quote came back. I assume this isn't time-sensitive today.
We can wait until next week.
Right.
I'll have that.
That would be cleaner.
That's fine.
All right, yeah, that's fine. I don't think it's a problem. I was just thinking that if it's not time-sensitive, it's fine. But I do have a question. Why are we just doing this now? Sorry, had to ask it.
We have discussed it many, many years in the past. Oh, it's on. Yes, sir. It has come up with almost every superintendent that I have served under. And the cost, typically the conversation was around the cost.
Yeah.
From time to time, we would go in and we would pull records, and we found records in a number of places in the school system. But I think they, as far as I know and from staff, they seem to be contained in one location now, so we've come that far, relatively speaking.
Relatively speaking. And I think in the past, I think you're absolutely right, Ms. Hawk. In the past, ESER funds hadn't been a part of this conversation, but yes, very true that the cost has been one that is difficult. But a very important thing to do to make sure we maintain our records for all the graduates of King George County Schools and Ralph Bunch Schools moving forward. So I think it's a well use of.
Legalistically, that's very true. One more, I have no problem waiting until the next board meeting for you to make an adjusted comment about what this would cost. The problem I'm thinking of is, I'm afraid DOMA would come back and say, well, how many? And that would reflect how much they might charge. And I think until we have some estimate, would we be able to give them an estimate about how many? Because I can't see them saying just, oh, yeah, we'll just charge you $500 for whatever.
I don't know that I have an answer for it. I think perhaps there are years. Again, I, perhaps Ms. Juzerski being more familiar with those records, and Ms. Norris, Ms. Norris is our hands-on person these days for those records. Ms. Norris might have a really good handle on. Ms. Norris might have a, a really good handle on what we've got in there. And I, I know, uh, that includes personnel records. Is that's correct or no?
They are part of this quote, but not in that same room where the Ralph Bunch records are and so on, yeah.
Right.
You know, I think we might be able to solve this. When I look at this right here, two scheduled record transports at thirteen hundred dollars per trip. I don't, if they're going to do just two trips, I would say, well, surely it's not half. So therefore it looks like it would be about thirteen hundred dollars per trip. So maybe they could just do it by the number of trips rather than worrying about the amount.
And, and I guess my question too would be, how much do we, we need to figure out how much we want back?
Of course.
Right.
I'm, I'm inclined to agree. I was going to say the exact same thing. I think it's probably, probably safe to say it's less than half. Um, and so they're already retrieving and managing and storing the documents. So whatever the, you know, delineation is, I would venture to say they probably have some adjustment. And if it was super complicated, we could make a decision next week, but I, I bet it won't be.
So are you recommending?
From a cost standpoint.
Just add the thirteen hundred now or still wait till next?
I would still wait. I would recommend waiting until next week.
Mr. Chair, I'll add a few things.
Mr. Rolls?
I'd be curious in the conversation with the Historical Society, if these documents, some of them at a certain age just become public documents. We don't have to worry about privacy concerns anymore or at what point we still have to protect that. Because, I mean, I'll see that makes it simpler if we can hand it over if they're just public now. Uh, and I'd also be curious how badly the Historical Society wants it. Or they, they want that, have to pay for the return shipment? Or, you know, what, what's, what do they feel like with that? And I think also you mentioned they described the vehicle again, the G P S tracked, it was, oh.
Yeah, again, I, don't quote me, but when they discussed the process, it was a very thorough, secure process as far as coming to pick up the records from King George County Schools and taking them down to their facility to digitize them in, in Virginia Beach. So, uh, like I said, GPS tracked, they have it the entire time, exactly where the vehicle is, where they picked them up, you sign them in, you sign them out. Uh, when they have them at their facility, there's a, uh, cataloging process where they know exactly what's in their, uh, facility, what's been digitized, what hasn't been digitized. And really, this is an important point too, that during the digitizing process, if we have a need for any of those records, uh, we can call them up during that time too. And they have a cataloging process where we could request a record and they could locate it for us during the digitizing process.
Just like, it could impact the, the price to return them if, I mean, I guess the need for all that precaution is that we need to make sure we don't lose these documents. But if there already been scans, we actually, we have them at least digitally. I don't even, I don't think we need to be quite so careful sending them back. Might be able to send it back in a more low-cost, uh, method.
You know, as we're talking about this, I do see another problem. Is, um, when you quoted before, right here, I'm looking at filing cabinets. If they return those documents, we are responsible to still now put them in a, to meet the qualifications.
I would disagree.
You don't think we need to?
If we have digital copies, then I don't think we have to have fair proof for them because we have a digital copy. That's just a bonus to have it.
So.
I think, I think that's correct.
I, I think that's, that probably, I mean, it, it sounds logical. Uh, I'm not sure what the Library of Virginia would say about that. Um, and I think that's worth a.
Yeah.
This company probably would, would know.
Why don't you ask that question also?
Absolutely.
Make sure that we're, because I would hate to all of a sudden, now we're worried about having storage units of three to five thousand dollars each, so.
Right.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, I'll be happy to bring that information back to you next school board meeting.
Thank you. So we're going to post, we're going to put that for a, uh, motion, an action item at the next board meeting. All right, um, now we'll go on to the discussion items and the update for policies. But before we begin that, if I would, I added one, um, item to the agenda, and that was the Budget Advisory Committee. Um, let me just mention what I'm talking about, and right now it's just a discussion. But we've talked about this before. To have a committee and that would be made up of, uh, a parent, a staff member, a teacher, a school board member, and a board of supervisors member, kind of five people. And would just be an advisory committee, um, to look at the budget. I see a lot of positive facts for that in that, uh, number one. And it's a lot having to do with the community, that the community would be more aware as we're going through the process, because they got a representative, they would feel better about it. And I'm especially even thinking about the Board of Supervisors. You know, so often it's like, um, the Board of Supervisor becomes brand new when we first start presenting it to them. And if we've had a member that's been on this committee from the Board of Supervisors the whole time, I think that would be another advocate on the board as we talk about having our budget approved. So it's a discussion. Any discussion?
Um, I would ask, would you, I would recommend, offer maybe like opening up instead of just one? I think it's a good idea, instead of just one of each, you know, you could have others that are interested, right? Like our other advisory committees.
That's a good point. Um, what would you recommend? Because obviously you have a committee that's many, like more than ten or so, you get a little, it's a little much. But what do you think?
I don't know.
Okay.
I just, I know, like our other, you know, our other advisory committees say their numbers flux, right? With folks that are interested, like the C T E committee is huge, others are small, right? So I think, I don't know, I would just be interested in, you know, I wouldn't want to limit it if there are folks that have, that are interested.
Good point. I like that.
Mr. Chair, could you, uh, repeat your recommendations as far as the composition of the board or that committee? I missed it.
Any recommendations for individuals that would be on that?
Right.
I don't necessarily have any now.
Not people, I mean, you said that one, one from.
Oh, I did. Yes, yes, I had five recommendations that would be, and they could be more than one person, like Ms. Gonzalez had suggested. I recommended a parent, a teacher, um, a school board member, a board of supervisors member, and a staff member.
I think you said student, didn't, did you?
I think I said staff.
Staff was a staff.
Actually, student's not a bad idea either.
I'm saying you could, I, I would think you could, there are lots of categories, right? And I think like, you know, staff members, students, I think it could be, you know, open it up.
Yeah, I, Ms. Gonzalez is right. I think the important members would be board of supervisors, uh, one of the, a school board, and then a teacher. Those are the three most important. However, staff and students and a parent, well, I think a parent's in there too. So those four I think would be the key ones, but then others would be very helpful, I agree. And I don't think we necessarily need to have any kind of vote. Could we ask you, Dr. Boyd, to look at forming that committee? Or does the board think we need to have more discussion and have a vote next time?
I think this is timely right now. We're, we're getting deep into the budget by the day. So I would prefer, I like the idea. And I, I think if we could move forward with it this evening, I would be happy to take on that responsibility.
I don't think this needs a motion unless you think.
May I make a comment? Um, last week I was, um, at the, uh, Machoduk Marina, just happened to be there with, with Mr. Stonehill and, and others. Uh, and as, as he was preparing lunch for a lot of us, uh, I, I asked him how, what, what his thinking about the, a budget committee, um. My question to him was, how about having, uh, someone from the school, from the school community? I, I didn't specify on your board of supervisors budget committee. And he said, well, they had, they would start to put that together in the next week or so. And at this point in time, I, I don't know, I didn't spend a lot of time talking with him, but I don't know the process that the board of supervisors use, use for putting together their committee. We might well want to check with, um, County Administrator's Office perhaps, or, or Mrs. Cupco or, or some member to see how they do their committee and then use a similar process.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. That's a good suggestion. I, I can tell you that I have spoken to some of the board of supervisors, one in particular. And, um, that board of supervisors was very in favor of, of us doing that. And that person even volunteered to be a member of that committee. So, um, I, I would like to direct Dr. Boyd to begin if, that process, but maybe before that, so that he knows which one of us might be willing to be on that committee.
I'd be interested in participating.
All right, Ms. Gonzalez, anybody else? All right, good. So if you could start with Ms. Gonzalez and then, uh, look at the rest and, uh, talk to the board of supervisors. And, um, and I'll speak to you privately about who I spoke with, but it doesn't have to be that person, obviously. You might go to the chair and discuss it with him.
Absolutely, and, and I'll move it later on this evening. We're going to do the strategic plan update. And at the end of that, I'm going to talk to you guys a little bit about the tentative timeline for the budget. So you'll see very quickly that this work is going to be done next week. Like, you know, don't quote me, but very quickly, I'll say.
All right, good. Thank you. All right, uh, and if you would, we kind of report to us the progress on that at the next meeting?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, if there's no more questions about that, let's move on to the, uh, policy updates. And the first one is the B D D electronic participation in meetings from remote locations. Any comments about that? I think there was one, and I believe it was Ms. Gonzalez already pointed this out in an email, that page three, bullet number four, for four times a year, you may have already made that change. So I just took off this off the, uh, internet about four days ago, so you may have updated that. But I think what we're looking at on this is page three, bullet number four. And it says personnel matters more than four. And, uh, I think the comment, and again, it came from, uh, something from Ms. Gonzalez, four times a year. You were assuming that, but why not put that in there?
Right, I'll make sure that that's correctly updated if it's not yet.
That's all I had for that. Anybody else? All right, so the next one is G A A, staff time schedules. Any comments there or discussion? All right, the next one is the G B M A, support staff grievances. Any comments there? I did have one with that one. It's a small thing. But on page two, number two, it says that they'll share in the cost. When you, when I hear that word share, it always makes me feel a little uncomfortable because it's not identified. Okay, how much of the share? Is it kind of a fifty-fifty or just whatever they determine? That's page two, number two. It says what? So you assume it's fifty-fifty. All right, that's fine. Any other comments about that one? No. All right, the G C N, evaluation of professional staff? Any comments? I have one at the bottom of page one, when it uses that term cultural competencies. Um, I'm not sure anybody could, I'm just curious what they meant by that, or there may not be a, there may not be an answer.
Mr. Chair, I looked it up and it's just verbatim from the law, so.
Is it just verbatim from the law?
Yeah, so regardless what it means.
Statute, all right. All right, next one is J M, the restraint and seclusion of students. I had one small question in page one, bullet two, and I think in a couple of other places. It just talks about training, Dr. Boyd. Do we do the training for that? How often do we do it?
Yes, I know at least annually we do that. Uh, in fact, I was walking through King George High School, I think, just before winter break, I think. And they were doing, yeah, right when we got back, they were do, oh, it was on the teacher workday when we got, the first day back, they were doing the restraint training in the library at King George High School.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you for answering that. Okay, the public, uh, the request for public records? I saw that Amanda Higgins is doing the training. Thank you for that. Any questions about that?
Uh, just a comment, I do, I still have an outstanding question about, uh, the blurb there at the last, the bottom of, let me find a page for you. Well, at the bottom of the first page of J M, right, it says we got to review this policy annually. And it's a question of whether V S P is, are they going to put this before us annually to look at? Or put it on us to make sure that it's done annually? I haven't asked Ms. Ewing yet, but I will.
No, is this the J M you're talking about?
Right.
Okay. So you're going to talk to Ms. Ewing about that?
Yeah, I suspect that they don't put it in front of us annually, so we just need to have our own system to do that.
All right, why don't you check with her and then report back? All right, um, where are we? The K B A dash R, request for public records, it's the same wording, but it's the R. Any comments about that? All right, the next one is K B A dash E, anything? All right, K L B, public complaints about learning resources? I did have a question about that. I'm just wondering if this whole process, which was very good, does it include only learning or instructional materials, or does it include library books?
There is a process for library books as well.
Is it part of this policy?
It's a similar process, but, uh, right, I, this is, this is for classroom activities and materials.
And not the library, okay. I knew we had another process for library. I just wondered if it was included there. All right, moving on. Uh, information items, uh, we'll start out with committee reports. And, um, we'll go down list, any committee report?
Yep, I do. Um, so on December sixth, I attended the Title One Advisory Committee meeting. Um, so they, um, Ms. Harris and the other staff members went over, um, kind of updates on their, their winter, their fall and winter family community events. So King George Elementary, which is a school-wide Title One, um, school, they had a fall night and they had a pretty good turnout. They had about a hundred and ninety-three students. I think that was well received. Potomac, which is a targeted assist school, so they have, they get a little bit, they have less, um, Title One funding. Um, they also had a Title One night. They said it was a small turnout, but the, the, the flip side of the small turnout was the folks were really engaged. Um, I forget what I was doing that evening. I wasn't able to attend. But I did talk my husband into taking my kids and they came home like wanting to buy math kits themselves. So anyway, I know it was a, like, a lot of good connections with, with families. Um, Sealston had a, their evening, they had a camping theme, sounded pretty cool. They had like a tent on the stage and kids could go in a tent and read. And the P T A had hot cocoa and stuff. Anyway, it sounded like a lot of fun. There's some review of, uh, like Benchmark Phonics, uh, an update on piloting the Graham Fletcher Kits for math, which I guess are getting pretty good reviews. I know they pilot a lot of things in the summer school programs and then see how they are received and they roll them out into the, um, into the rest of the school year. Uh, and they're just commenting in general that things are going well, that there's plenty of programming, a lot of good materials, but really need more people, need more staff, need more, need more teachers, um, and staff members to help provide those services and programming to the kids. So plug, plug away at that budget season. Um, and then yesterday I had the opportunity to participate in a vendor demo, uh, that Ms. Half arranged at the middle school. So demo, demonstrating some, uh, touchscreen whiteboard technology that she stumbled across at a, um, I think a convention or conference earlier in the year. So it was pretty cool. The fellow had, you know, brought up a screen. I think he's going to leave it in the, in the, um, schools for teachers to play around with for a couple of months, I think he said. Um, anyway, so there's a lot of enthusiasm for that. Um, just taking a look at it, right, and see if it's, if I think it's of value, a good teaching tool, um, for the classrooms or not. So anyway, so that remains to be seen. And I think that's it for my committee reports.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Ms. Hawk?
I did not have any official committee reports, but I did, I did, um, wander into a presentation and it truly was wandering in because I, I thought that something was happening at the high school, but then it happened at a different time. But, um, in the library, um, there were a group of kids and there, um, some adults and some teachers. And they were listening to a presentation by a retired veterinarian who goes around the world in a program with the U S Department of Agriculture. And, um, he was presenting slides and a commentary about his experiences as a veterinarian, uh, in the different cultures, um, in the Himalayas. I learned how to pronounce that correctly. And, uh, then later in Mongolia and a number of other areas. It was fascinating. It was absolutely fascinating. And I came away knowing far more than I ever thought I wanted to know, um, about the different varieties of sheep and goats and cultures and the experiences of the village incorporating, uh, this retired veterinarian and the U S program coming in. I was, I was absolutely delighted. You never know what you're going to learn wandering around a school. Thank you.
Mr. Rolls, committee report?
Yes, um, so I had mentioned at the last meeting in, in passing at least, that there's some talk about perhaps changing the fiscal agent for the Commonwealth Governor's School. And I am going to ask for your input on that today. I think it's a significant, uh, decision that I'd like to know the will of the board. Uh, so to give you a little more context, uh, C G S has been around for over twenty years and has never changed the fiscal agent. It's been Spotsylvania has been the fiscal agent the whole time. And to explain what the fiscal agent, what that means a little bit more is, they're the ones that just manage the books and make sure, do all the paperwork for the money to make sure it's all good to go, that we all can, you know, contribute to. that we all can, you know, contribute to CGS. And so, like I said, Spotsylvania's had it this whole time, and now Stafford has expressed a desire to take it over. And I guess sometime before COVID, Spotsylvania had expressed that they might want to give it up, but now that's no longer the case. Because anyway, it's just extra work, that's a cost that they take on, take care of. It's a good thing that we don't have to do it, I mean, that'd be extra staff for us to do. But, so there is, we refer to the Constitution for the CGS, and you need to vote in January on who the fiscal agent is gonna be each year, so that's, we're meeting next week. And so I need to hear what you think before then. And I will ask Dr. Boyd to say a few words, because the superintendents got together to talk about it in more detail as well.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rolls. So I've been to my third Commonwealth Governor's School Board meeting now. And so in that amount of time, there has been some discussion about changing of the fiscal agent. Stafford has made a proposal to, to request the responsibility of being the fiscal agent, as Mr. Rolls stated. Spotsy has done it for 20-plus years. And in that request, I think what it has caused is everyone, the four school divisions that are responsible for governing the Commonwealth Governor's School, ourself, Caroline, Spotsy, and Stafford, to take a closer look at the bylaws. One of the things that came out of that discussion was the actual process for requesting permission to accept the fiscal agent responsibilities. So there's a number of things that came out of that conversation in the bylaws, like the meeting of an annual financial committee, the discussion about the evaluation of the, of the director, who's responsible for evaluating the director, and, and a few other things that I thought were good moves moving forward in consideration. So as Mr. Rolls pointed out, I think at the next CGS Board meeting, there'll be discussion about who should be responsible, or how we should go about, and that's an important distinction. Who is currently the fiscal agent? And then I think what's going to end up transpiring is how we should go about considering possibly a change in the fiscal agent at the next CGS Board meeting. So Mr. Rolls is that representative, and I think his request this evening is for any feedback from you guys on the direction you think King George County schools may want to consider moving forward with.
Well, before I open it up, oh, thank you, Dr. Boyd. I'll just, my strong recommendation is that we do not change the fiscal agent this year, because I've not yet seen a solid plan to transition it. It's never been done in 20 years, like I said, there are a lot of concerns about the impacts of that, because essentially CGS employees, and that's like the staff, that does include our CGS teachers here. CGS teachers here are on our payroll. But some CGS staff, like the director and a few others, are Spotsylvania employees, which does things like allows the director to send her child or children to Spotsy schools if she wants to, even though she lives, and like, you know, Caroline or Westmoreland or something like that. So it'd be real impacts there, which I'll see, there's a need to change it for the best interest of the students, we will. But I still, I need to see a solid reason why that's how it's gonna benefit us, haven't seen that, and as well as a plan for transition. And I think since the vote's next week, we don't have it yet, I think the soonest that that could happen would be next year. Is what I'm gonna...
And I'm sorry, and I would agree with Mr. Rolls. I, I think the logical next step, given the conversations we've had, and the direction that we can potentially go in, would be to not change fiscal agents this year, but explore the avenues that we need to consider if that is an option in the future.
Good.
Any concerns about that position, approach, or questions?
Just a minute, I know it's not normal in a committee report, but it, it fits very well. So I do want to open it up for comments and anybody might have about that.
I think it makes sense. I concur with that approach.
Just to be, to be clear, had, I, I know that Stafford has been talking about taking it, taking on the responsibility. Spotsylvania, for several years when I was on the board, was, was talking about giving it up. But of course, they're in a changing world also. Has anyone asked us to be involved in the process, or to look at taking that on?
No, it's never been an option considered for King George to take it. It's just, it's really just between Stafford and Spotsylvania, it's the two biggest divisions in the, in the group.
Okay, I was just, it is good to clarify the process, absolutely good. Again, I, I am, I am trying to make sure we don't ask for something that we really don't want.
You know, we're certainly not asking for it, I'm not, I don't think, but Stafford is, and it's just whether to grant them that.
Ms. Hoover, do you have any comment?
I would just agree that if there's no plan, we should wait.
It sounds like we're all in agreement, Mr. Rolls, and I would say the same thing. I trust you and Dr. Boyd for what you have seen, you've seen it far deeper than we have, and I trust you and I agree with your decision based on what you told us.
Yeah, very good, I'll vote that way next week.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. All right, next is Health Insurance Options.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we've got, Ms. Yzerzki's gonna come forward and, and give us some feedback. If you remember before, way back last year, in 2022, we talked about some considerations concerning healthcare and kind of the direction that you want the school board office to move forward in. So Ms. Yzerzki, in, in typical Ms. Yzerzki fashion, has attacked this and done an amazing job of pulling together a lot of good information that I think will guide us moving forward when considering healthcare options.
Thank you, good evening, and Happy New Year to each of you. And I'm, I'm happy to be here this evening to share with you this short, and I reiterate, short presentation to update you on the procurement process and a timeline, if you remember, as Dr. Boyd said, that you requested at our last meeting in December. To kick off this presentation, I felt like it would be a good idea to look at our procurement policy that's in your school board policy manual. And that policy reads, "The King George County Purchasing Ordinance has been approved and adopted by the King George County Board of Supervisors. It establishes policies and procedures that ensure all procurement transactions will be carried out in an effective, economical, open, fair, and impartial manner as required by state law. The goal of the purchasing ordinance is to ensure that all goods and services purchased for the county schools, or the county and the schools, excuse me, are of the proper quality, quantity, at the lowest available cost, received in a timely manner, and a good value for the taxpayer." Next slide, thanks. I'm sorry, one back. It goes on to state that the purchasing ordinance applies in its entirety to all King George County government departments, authorities, and King George County schools. The purchasing ordinance and policies, regulations of King George County are in conformance with the Virginia Public Procurement Act. And I'm not gonna read through that last paragraph, it's simply to summarize it. It says we will follow that, and Dr. Boyd, or our superintendent, approves all purchases. So, over the past few weeks, we've actually had the opportunity to meet with several of the administrators from some of the county offices. We, we, and those were good, informative, and productive meetings that we had with them. And in talking with these individuals, these are the things that came out of those meetings. Bullet one, we have to follow the King George County procurement policy and procedures as outlined in Policy DGA. Bullet two, while the procurement process must remain fair and impartial, vendors should not make presentations at board meetings. And lastly, vendors may be invited to present their proposal to an evaluation committee after the established RFP period. And in doing that, one of our tasks that you gave us was, well, what would a procurement timeline for us look like if we wanted to explore the option of changing our health insurance vendor? So we met with members from the procurement office, and they graciously helped us create this procurement timeline. It was, it was a great meeting, Michelle and I attended, and the individuals in that department could not have been more helpful. So first and foremost, if we were going to do this, and we said, you know, I, I have to go back to the board with the number of days or the length of time it would take us to do this. So we sat down and we talked with her, and, and she is, she is an expert at what she does. So she said, first and foremost, the Office of Human Resources would develop a survey to determine the desired key elements of health insurance. We would allow seven days for our office to develop that survey. The next 14 days, we would roll out that survey, and we would have all of our employees complete the survey so we could elicit feedback from the staff. The next 21 days, during the next 21 days, the Offices of Human Resources would establish an evaluation committee, and then we would look at the, the results from the survey, and then determine our next steps. Based on the feedback from the evaluation committee, if it's recommended, the Office of Human Resources would partner with the King George County Procurement Office to develop the scope for the request for the RFP. That's a 60-day, you know, she advised us, it takes at least 60 days to work on that scope and come up with that scope.
Ms. Yzerzki, sorry, you said she, I missed who she is?
Her name is Megan Pitts. She is the County Procurement Manager.
Okay, thank you.
And she would probably not be happy if I said this, but if you have questions about procurement, she is the one to contact. Once we do, we develop the scope, she would post the RFP on Virginia's marketplace, which is the name, it's Eva, it's the website, it's, it's the marketplace for all products and things, or for vendors to go to if they want to offer their product in the state of Virginia. It would be posted, she recommended a 30-day posting on Eva if, if we went this route. So on the next page, after that 30-day period, the evaluation committee would take 45 days to review and rank the submissions that the procurement manager receives. And we would, each one of us, everyone on that committee, this is done individually, it is not done as a committee. If you've ever served on one of those, I do remember being on one of those a while back for a construction project, we are all giving these huge proposals, and we have to look at them, and then we have to rank them using the rubric that is developed by the procurement, or, yes, the procurement manager. So once we fill out all of our rubrics and we submit them back to the procurement manager, she looks at it, she ranks them, we would invite the top three companies or vendors back to meet with the committee for the purpose of presenting their proposals and answering any questions the committee may have. Then the evaluation committee would meet, once they've seen all the proposals, to discuss the proposals and make a final decision. The evaluation committee makes a recommendation to the school board, and then the procurement office would need 30 days to develop and finalize the contract. So when you count up all these days, it takes, on the last slide, it's the, the total time is nine months.
I was just adding up the days.
It's about nine months. So if we wanted to go this route, it would be advisable or recommended that we start this process at the end of March, beginning of April. And that would give us an answer about our health insurance, hope, you know, let the committee do the work. You have to trust the process, and then we would at least know in time for the budget process next year. Lastly, you know, an employer typically changes health insurance providers when the employees are dissatisfied with the services, or it becomes unaffordable, and we can't, we can no longer afford it. So I would ask all of us, even in the committee, you know, keep those couple of things in mind going forward. But that is my short update on this process, the procurement process and the timeline.
Any questions?
Yes, so I'm, I'm curious, and I don't think I necessarily have all the details here on this, so correct me if I mistake this, but I understand we currently have Anthem, and there's a problem with that with Mary Washington right now. So I don't know if we, is that, they stopped taking it, or is it a threat of that?
I made little notes, because I figured that would come up this evening. What, where we are, this is typical, this typically happens. If you will remember, if you were in this area last year, Cigna Health, the health insurance company, went through the same thing with Mary Washington Hospital. It's, it's typical, it's a typical contract negotiation tactic that I think healthcare providers sometimes utilize. We know this could have caused anxiety for our people. I would venture to say that a lot of us in this room have an Anthem healthcare product. To include, if you looked at the list, it's Anthem Medicare, it's, 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 it's a lot. Anthem is the largest provider in the state of Virginia. And by being so, they have a lot of bargaining power. So we have a document that we have prepared for employees to go out by the end of this week that answers some frequently asked questions. It lists the Mary Washington healthcare facilities that would not, let me back up just a little bit. Our healthcare plan, the contract is right now, is good through February 28th. And Anthem and Mary Washington are continuously working to come to an agreement. If for some reason they don't reach an agreement, but by February 28th, or March 1st, if you continue to go to an Anthem provider, then you're going to pay a little more out of pocket, because it will be, Mary Washington facilities will be out of network. You have to believe, we have to believe that they are, both of those entities are putting forth their best faith effort to come to a resolution. Again, it's not something new. Cigna went through this last year with them, and we, we, it is a little bit of a waiting game, but we have to... And, and just also, Mr. Rolls, just to throw this out there, and this is, this is in the, and I believe you all are included on the communication, on the distribution list, so you all receive, will receive this document. We also are fortunate that we do have another hospital in our area. And they list other hospitals that are in their, within their network in the area. You also have to remember for emergency services, when you go to an emergency room, you are to go to the closest emergency room, and the emergency services are the same price, either whether you're in network or out of network. So we can still keep going to those, to those, to the Mary Washington facilities. But after February 28th, if they don't reach an agreement, if you choose to go to a Mary Washington facility, then you would perhaps pay a little more. If you are already seeing a Mary Washington college, whoops, excuse me, hospital physician or a physician's group, there is something called continuity of care. So if you have a long-term illness and you have been seeing a Mary Washington hospital physician, or for instance, you are expecting a child and you are seeing one of those physicians, the agreement for continuity of care, we're not, they're not going to make you change your physician. They'll give you a period of time, so...
Other questions?
And just one more. It was maybe the third slide, or maybe the fourth? There were three bullets on there with the title procurement? Were, were those all from Policy DGA, or what was the source?
Those were the takeaways we had regarding procurement after we met with the individuals at the county office.
Okay.
Your, your policy basically is the, it says at the top of both slides, policy, it's two slides.
Right.
And it says Policy DGA. Those are our takeaways from meeting with the county administrators with regards to procurement.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, other questions? What was the outcome for Cigna and Mary Washington?
They came to an agreement.
Okay, that's what I thought.
They came, they came to one.
Well, thank you very much, if there's no more questions, thank you. We'll probably have further discussions about this, if we want to continue then. And your recommendation was if we decide that we want to do this, that we would need to start it by March.
Late March, begin 1st of April.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on. The strategic plan, Division Strategic Plan Updates, Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vance, if you could go ahead and put that presentation up. So again, it's...
So again, it excites me, this work on our strategic plan is, I enjoy this. So if you guys remember, next slide, John, our strategic plan is called A Bridge to Excellence. And this is a very dense document, it's got a lot of information in it. It's got four main goals, it has twelve objectives spread out over those goals. It has performance indicators and it has strategies for performance. So what I've done with the support of my team at the school board office is we've tried to condense that as much as we possibly can and provide you with some highlights on where we are with making progress towards our King George County School Strategic Plan. So if you guys remember, back in August of 2021, in the midst of COVID, we consulted with Gaston Educational, or we contracted with Gaston Educational Consulting LLC to engage in a community-wide process where we engaged in three phases. Phase one was to review comprehensive data for the school division. Phase two involved pulling together a large number of diverse stakeholders and providing feedback from the community, the school division, students, teachers, parents, everyone of the like in nine separate focus group discussions to talk about our values as a school division and the direction we wanted to head in. And where we currently sit is in phase three and where we'll sit for, for some time during the life of this plan, 2022 to 2027, a five-year life of this plan, is faith, phase three, which involves the implementation, annual updates to the school board and continual updates to the working documents. So one thing that we heard through the process of creating the strategic plan is that this is not a plan written in stone. It's one that is a living document, one that grows with all of the different considerations, the changing environment and the different directions that the school board desires to go in. And it all ties back to our mission and vision statement, which is there on the left-hand side. So I'm going to do my best job of, of expressing those goals to you, talking about some of the objectives and some of the things that we've done to meet those objectives, some of the highlights we've done to meet some of those objectives. So next slide, John. Goal number one talks a little bit about the employee investment and development. So goal one, and this is one that we've talked a lot about. This is one we focused a lot on because as you know, there is a teacher shortage. And we are, you know, not just King George County schools, but every school division in the country is having a difficult time hiring, retaining, attracting qualified teachers. And then at the same time, with, with the workforce turning over and having a much younger workforce and by that nature, less experienced workforce, we're very much focused on the development of our workforce and figuring out how to move them forward. So some of the key things I pull out of that is obviously stable workforce, investing in our employees, the value of relationships and our responsibility to produce an educated and productive citizenry. So objective number one, next slide, John. The most important thing, again, I'm not going to read everything here, but this objective has to do with the recruitment and retention of our employee pool. So what have we done? The stars are what we've done thus far. And then the bar graph down there is hopefully the direction that we're going to continue to push in. So what have we done so far? We've increased salaries for employees by at least five percent and increased most hourly scales to fifteen dollars. There's a few hourly scales we're still working on, we hope to get those, some of those addressed by next budget season. But again, all of this is in the vein of being competitive with our surrounding school divisions so that we can attract and retain qualified employees. We've developed, HR has developed an updated exit interview survey so that we have some qualitative data on employees' experiences so that we can continue to move forward pleasing our employees and figuring out what it is they need to be successful in our school division. We've administered an employee HR budget input survey, which you guys saw the results of not too long ago, which is very valuable data moving forward, particularly in the budget cycle. And we've also gathered data on regional school division salaries, which again, in hopes of being competitive in this next budget cycle, we, we need to find our place in, in providing competitive salaries. Otherwise, it's a vacuum and, and it's, you know, it's kind of a dog-eat-dog world right now in, in the, in the ability to attract qualified teachers. So we need to make sure that we are putting our best foot forward and attracting those teachers. As we move forward, we want to request, request a salary increase for all employees. That makes King George County Schools competitive regionally. We want to adjust our teacher scale if we can to a percentage between each step, we've talked about this. We've got some steps in our, our teacher scale right now that are compressed, particularly steps four through eight. And we, we'd like to make sure that eventually we can get to a place where those steps are, are a little more evenly distributed. And as Ms. Yuzerski just pointed out, we're in the process of, of exploring healthcare options, healthcare committee and a timeline to review healthcare options, which our employees are very interested in. So those are things we're doing for Objective A. I'll, I'll go quick. Like I said, there's a lot of information in here. Next slide, John. Objective B talks about new employee experiences. If you guys remembered, we offered a thousand dollar bonus and a five hundred dollar bonus for full-time and part-time employees. In December, we offered a reimbursement for initial special education licensure courses and practice licensure testing. So this is often the gateway for entering the profession. Getting that initial special education licensure course and making sure that you're passing the credentialing test to get a teaching license. We have worked our way into being able to provide reimbursement for, for the cost of those. Developing a K-2 coaching plan to address the new Virginia Literacy Act requirements. And we've applied for, received and offered the right recruitment incentive in public education. If you remember the Rite Grants, this was for hard-to-staff positions and we could offer a bonus. This was money coming, grant money coming from the state. And if we were fortunate enough to offer teachers or positions during that tight window of time, we could offer that bonus, which we've employed that as well. Moving forward, we want to establish an employee recognition program through partnerships with local businesses. We want to partner with a career switcher or university program so that we can create a pipeline or an avenue for those desiring to be teachers to get the initial certifications they need to enter, enter the, the profession. And we're going to work towards looking at the feasibility and cost of offering a longevity bonus for King George High School teachers, which is something many other school divisions are exploring right now as well. Next slide, John. Objective C, this, this first goal has four objectives, the other ones don't have as many. So Objective C talks about the diversity of our workforce and how we continue to increase the diversity. We will again host the Teacher Job Fair in the spring, we did this last year and it was a great success. We'll expand our recruitment efforts to include additional universities. And we will also offer a staff position job fair in the summer of 2023. We've increased our social media postings, I know you guys have seen and the community has seen, to include job openings in King George County Schools. I think we've been somewhat successful in attracting local folks into King George County Schools. Moving forward, we want to set up recruitment meetings at colleges, further develop a teacher apprentice program and research and expand recruitment efforts at our Virginia HBCUs. Next slide, John. Objective four has to do with professional development. And as I said before, I'm going to be giving you guys a lot of data on, on the makeup of our workforce moving forward into budget season. We have a very large, in fact, a majority of our employees have between like one and four years of service. So it's, we have a very young workforce in King George County Schools. So professional development is a very important consideration on making sure that we coach them along in their journey to become a teacher. So what we've done thus far is implement a needs assessment survey for our instructional staff. We've developed a division-wide professional development theme based on needs, administer a standardized exit interview to employees who separate from King George County Schools, annually review options to move any grant-funded positions or programs over to our operational budget if we, if we deem that to be appropriate. Moving forward, kind of the goals, explore the feasibility of securing a professional learning and retention coordinator. It's a huge job and it's a very important job right now with a very young workforce. Look at modifying the instructional calendar to, to include more profession, professional development days. This is probably an important consideration moving forward. One of the constraints as we know is time. And if we don't make it a priority to provide professional development time, it's one of those things that isn't always a pressing issue. So making time for it and prior, prioritizing it in our instructional calendar is important. And then finally, working with building-level administration to devet, to develop the division-wide professional development program is, is how we'll move forward in the future. So next goal, quickly, our next goal has to do with instruction. And within that goal, there's a lot of talk there, I won't read it all, but about teaching and learning. It's about the quality of our curriculum. And our primary responsibility as, as being stewards of education in King George County is at the end of that goal there, which is to prepare students for multiple opportunities as they leave King George County Schools. Because as we've all heard to this point by now, we are responsible for preparing our students instructionally for jobs that don't even exist yet. So we need to make sure that we're on the cutting edge of, of preparing to do that. So within that goal, next, next step, John. Objective A in there talks about our curriculum and our program of studies. So school counselors are developing a scope and sequence for NAVIANS, we've talked a little bit about NAVIANS and the value of that in the school division. So K-12 continuum of scope and sequence on some of the things that we can do with that program as far as preparing our students for future opportunities. Hire a work-based learning coordinator with the use of grant funds right now. There's a lot of talk about workforce development and making sure that we provide our students with workforce experiences. It's a big, it's, it's a growing area in public education and one that involves the coordination between the school division and local business. We need, we need a coordinator to be able to do that moving forward.
Second, NAVIANS, I'm not familiar with that, what is that?
So this is the program that we talked about, our counselors run it right now. I know that Gail probably knows a lot more about it than I do. It's the program that we use for college planning, it's the program we use for career planning. It has career inventories in it, it has college options in it, I think even the Common App is available through it. And it's, it's really an amazing tool for our students, and maybe Jackson, you might even know a little bit about it, to start making plans and preparing for the future. And, and our counselors will be, are, are currently developing a scope and sequence in a continuum of different options within that program for elementary, middle and high students.
It's a tool that the counselors use or, I mean, can the students get on and use it as well or is only with the counselor there?
I, I, do they have their own logins? I'm not sure. Do you have your own login? Jackson is nodding to me, yes. Okay, I know the counselors usually use it with, with students, but they can log onto it as well.
It's, Dr. Boyd, it's also a nationally utilized program so that it's consistent with counseling recommendations through the National Advisory Committee as well as the various state advisory committees.
Very powerful program and, and one that's widely accepted by post-secondary institutions across the country. Continuing on, we're auditing the program of studies and each school's master schedule to ensure equitable access. So I heard today from Ms. Half that we actually had a Power School training with our principals and a number of other individuals at the middle and high school to start taking a look at the technical ends of our master schedules at the middle and high school. So taking a look at that program of studies, making sure that our master schedule is as refined as it possibly can be to offer as much as it can to our students. Important step when we're talking about a curriculum and program of studies. And then finally, using grant funds to support accessibility for all students who desire to take AP and dual enrollment course opportunities. So test, test fees, access fees, things of that nature. And then moving, and then go back to that, sorry. Moving forward, preparing department with regional grant programs such as Go Virginia. Ms. Gonzalez, you pointed me in the direction of that and, and we'll continue to pursue those opportunities. Exploring increased partnerships with business and industry in King George County, which we've got a few irons in the fire for that. And then in the spring of 2023, we're required and will update our gifted and talented program offerings in King George County. So next slide, Objective B. Yes, sir.
Again, so Go Virginia, what's, what's that one?
Go Virginia right now is, is a grant-funded program in the state of Virginia that is looking at partnering businesses with school divisions and providing career development opportunities. Right now in, in King George County, there's a big one for cybersecurity. We've set in on a few meetings with that. And it's basically partnering, like I said, school divisions with businesses in certain career clusters, ones that are in high demand.
That's what they do, like that work-based learning then?
Exactly. All right, so continuing on, Objective B, and the second goal has to do with learning experiences for our students. So we are in the process or have currently employed a pre-K through twelve digital citizenship curriculum map. And we're currently providing teachers with PD on that digital citizenship process. We're engaging in division-wide conversations with stakeholders through our advisory councils. As you know, through our website, many parents have reached out to me, many community members on, on joining those advisory councils. Our special services department completed a, the maintenance of effort, which basically takes a look at the amount of money that we have for special education services and the number of needs we have in that department and how well we are doing in meeting those needs. And then that last star there is increasing parent engagement through social media, which in turn improves high-quality instruction in our classrooms. So those are all things that are stars right now, things that we're kind of proud of and will continue to work in that vein towards that objective. And then it, it, working towards the, the next goals there are working to finalize our King George County School Technology Plan and the implementation of that in the fall of 2023. Continue to develop engagement opportunities for students and families through our, our Title I and STEAM nights. And continue to explore the transportation barriers to after-school programs at the secondary level. So we've talked a lot about this, making sure that we can provide after-school experiences or extracurricular experiences and remove that barrier of transportation, which is not just a barrier in King George County. We've talked about the need for additional bus drivers. But we are going to continue to work in that vein of seeing if we can't figure out that Rubik's Cube and provide after-school experiences for our students, particularly on the secondary level. Next slide, John. Objective C has to do with high-quality instruction. So just at the beginning of this year, we've updated our secondary grading guidelines for our middle and high school. That's our grades six through twelve and it talks about expectations from teachers and from students as far as how we grade and how we receive grades and what, and how we process those things in Power School and everything else. Continue to analyze our student diagnostic and performance assessment data, which is going to become more important as we move forward out of COVID and we get back into accreditation discussions and SOLs and all of those things that took somewhat of a backseat during, during COVID. We, we've got ongoing data meetings at, at the division level and the school level, which are continually conducted and we're continuing to stay abreast of the VDOE guidance on the standards of accreditation because at the state level as well, as we've worked our way through COVID, there's been a number of waivers and a number of considerations when it comes to accreditation. So planning, planning to employ resources to address expectations for the new Virginia Literacy Act and then plan summer comprehensive data analysis meetings, which we do annually and will continue to do. Next slide, this goal, the third of, of four goals, has two objectives. And this one particularly has to do with our community and collaboration engagement with our community members. Next slide, John. Objective A here has to do with informative communication to our community. Making sure that we pull in all of our stakeholders and we make them active participants in the product that we push forward for our students. So we've issued King George County Schools Communication Guide in the, in November of 2022 to our staff members. It talks about how, when, why, and, you know, what we should do as far as communicating with our stakeholders. We've redesigned our King George County Schools website, which you probably see now just in January of 2023. And we're, and we're working with our ITLs to review division and, and school webpages for accuracy. And we've done the Ask the Superintendent where citizens can ask and submit questions where I, I will provide an answer for, for the, the good of the community. And then moving forward, we'll inventory and create a list of communication platforms, which there are a ton of them out there right now. And see if we can come up with a more concise and focused group, group of communication platforms. concise and focused group of communication platforms moving forward. And then finally, we'll generate stakeholder feedback on communication platforms, the ones that we use and potentially the ones that we may need moving forward. Last objective in this goal has to do with the community partnership. And we will continue to offer access to school board meetings, both in person and online. I've heard good reviews from that, and I think it's a cost that is good. We will offer via our webpage the ability to participate in an advisory committee. Currently, we have advisory committees in those following areas. And then moving forward, we will initiate a budget committee, which we actually did tonight, on investing stakeholders during the budget creation process. We will increase opportunities for parents and community members to speak with the superintendent. And then during budget season particularly, we will increase our visibility across the county through community forums. Last goal has to do with safe learning environments, which, if you remember, we ended last school year with a lot of discussion about safe learning environments and how safe and secure our schools were. And unfortunately, as I think we've mentioned even recently down in Newport News, we've continued to have conversations about safe learning environments. So within this goal, there's two objectives. The first objective has to do with partnering with communities, with our community to ensure safety and well-being of our students. So I've spent a lot of time in my prior role, a short amount of time in the deputy role, with making sure that we've updated our crisis management plan with our sheriff's department and our first responders. We've partnered with local law enforcement and first responders to conduct monthly check-in meetings. And we've, we have school-based teams that have attended the National Threat Assessment Conference and also the Virginia School Safety Forum. There's a lot of information on school safety coming out right now, and Virginia is considered kind of ground zero for being able to provide that information. Following the Virginia tech crisis, Virginia became the hub for school safety. So the threat assessment process and all the things that we're considering with school safety right now, we are following to a T. And being in Virginia, it's something that's very important to the Commonwealth. So working with King George County Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department, we complete a school safety audit annually. And in the last six months, we've installed crisis cabinets at every single school. We've also created the Critical Response Graphics, which is a great communication tool between the school division and first responders on communicating locations within the building, locations of AEDs, fire extinguishers, and the like, all of the things that are available in the school. We've got through these crisis response graphics now. Moving forward, we want to develop or continue to develop the Positive Behavioral Intervention and Support Program, PBIS it's referred to. And if you've been to Potomac Elementary, which I can't sing enough praises about, they do a wonderful job of this, we would really like to grow this program across the division and make sure that many of the things that are happening at Potomac right now, as far as the PBIS program, we grow across the division. Moving forward, we want to look to secure an additional social worker. As you, Ms. Fisher, I think, mentioned at some point this evening that we're at about a one to a thousand ratio right now. We really need to get to about a one to 250 ratio. Not getting too deep in the weeds, but, you know, there's a lot of mental health needs right now that we certainly could address and need to address with the capacity we have for social workers. And then finally, in this objective, we would review and reestablish the Virginia Tiered Systems of Supports procedures following COVID. So next slide, John. Objective B, and the final objective here has to do with facilities. So what we've done is we meet monthly with the King George County Development Committee. That committee meets and we talk. I'm the representative for the school division. Sheriff Giles is the representative for the sheriff's department, and there's a representative for every department in King George County. And we hear monthly plans for new developments in the community. So it really kind of gives us a firsthand look at how our schools' enrollment may grow. So I think it's a great place to be, a great committee to be sitting on. We've completed our school safety inspection checklist for all schools in the summer of 2022. We worked with King George County on the capital improvement plan, and we'll continue to work with Honeywell to identify energy and operational savings throughout the division. As you know, we have a contract with Honeywell to do that. And then finally, we'll explore the feasibility of solar options moving forward. Continue to move forward on the building of the new King George County Schools preschool. Work with building-level administration to develop a division-wide capital improvement plan request process. So working from the bottom up on that capital improvement plan request process. So next slide, John, last slide. I know that's a lot of information. I tried to condense it as much as I possibly could, and I'm talking a lot, I'm sorry. But that entire plan, and I want to make sure that I emphasize this here at the end, that entire strategic plan and all of the goals associated with it is really the document we need to lean on as we work our way into budget season. So that's why I really concluded with a proposed budget development timeline for fiscal year 23, 23, 24. You'll see it stretches over really four months there. April's, for whatever reason, they're down at the bottom, it's down at the bottom. But basically, in the month of January, some of these things we're already in the midst of. We've solicited survey input from our staff. We are this evening providing a comprehensive plan update to the school board and the community. We will, I will, next week, or excuse me, at the end of this week, meet with our professional organizations, KGEA and VPE, to figure out what their priorities are moving forward in the budget. We'll identify and define key expenditures and revenue variables. Meet with principals and department heads. All of that is going to happen here very quickly. And now I would include the addition of getting feedback from the budget committee in January so that by the beginning of February, February 6th, school board meeting will be the preliminary draft presentation to the school board on that initial budget. Following that, we're required to schedule at least one, if not more, work sessions, or, excuse me, public hearings. We can have work sessions as well. And then March, school board adoption. And then what you don't see there is in April and May is final adjustments based on the Board of Supervisors' feedback and then approval, hopefully in the May, in the April-May timeframe. But last year, you know, it was much later, approval of the fiscal year 23, 24 budget. I'm going to stop there, Mr. Chair, and I'll take any questions that anyone has on that update.
Any questions?
No, that was a lot. Well done.
It's hard to, it's hard to take it all in, sorry.
Yeah, it is a lot.
Yeah, I would, I didn't notice it was not on Board Docs. I know you sent us an email copy, and I appreciate that very much, and I did glance through it, although it was a lot. But maybe these kinds of things, make sure it's on the board doc.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions anybody has?
No, thank you.
Yes, thank you. You did a marvelous job. I appreciate it very much. All right, still to you for the superintendent's report.
I'm not going to talk anymore. It's been a great first week back. We've had a couple meetings at the school level already. We've talked about the importance of attendance. We've begun the second semester at the high school. I love the second semester at the high school because all students are in new classes. It's like the first day of school all over again. So I was there on that first day because I liked the energy in the building. So it's a good time right now. I'm always reminding parents and students that it is the beginning of the second semester, the second half of the school year, the home stretch. So make sure that you continue to buckle down. I'll say at the end here, can't stress the importance enough of attendance. If we, if you really only miss less than two days of school a month, you are considered chronically absent by the state definition by the end of the school year. If you put it in that context, that's only two school days a month. So make sure that you're getting to school. And then finally, I'd like to welcome our new board member. Glad to have you, Ms. Hoover. And that'll be the end of my report. I'll stop talking.
All right, we'll have board comments, and we'll start with Jackson.
Good evening, everybody. So before break, the King George National Honor Society, they sold candy grams, which all proceeds were donated, sorry, to Mental Health America. Also, 28 new members were inducted on December 15th to the Honor Society. And then currently, they're planning a canned food drive along with a community event in the spring. The King George Decca is, we've heard a lot about, is they're preparing for their state leadership conference on March 3rd and is going to go through the 5th. It's in Virginia Beach. They are looking for judges, so if any of you are interested, ask Ms. Strauss, or she gave me instructions on how to do that, so if you, you can ask me. And moreover, the Special Olympics Feet Meet, it changed names, I think it was called something else last year, but I can't remember, but it's Feet Meet this year, and it's going to return on the 12th at King George High School. If interested, any King George High School student is encouraged to volunteer. Let's see, the Theater Department is performing The Little Prince, January 25th through the 28th at 7:00 PM. Kindergarten through third-grade students of all three elementary schools are coming to the high school to watch the performance during pass and lunchtime on Thursday and Friday of that week. Ms. Wines, the Theater Department head, is, she wants to remind you all that you guys are free entry with one guest. She just asked if you guys can remind her so that she can make sure there's adequate seating. They're also auditioning for the SpongeBob Musical, the Spring, or musical, the first week of February. Very interesting. The Fall Play Clue, 100% of the proceeds were donated towards the effort, the charity Love Thy Neighbor. It was $411. And then during the future plays, they're going to continue to sell fanograms during intermission to support Love Thy Neighbor, which is their charity for the year. And that is all from me.
Thank you very much. That was very thorough. Appreciate it very much. Devin?
All right, thank you. So I have a couple of comments from fellow students for you tonight. So my first grievance, I suppose, is that some students have requested a longer lunch period. Some students, especially those getting lunch at the school, have come to me and said that they feel that they haven't gotten enough time to eat their lunches before they have to return their trays and it's time to go to the next period. So I believe that reviewing the schedule, like I said at the beginning of the year, with the bell schedule being pretty short, if that could also be reviewed during the revision of the bell schedule, that would be ideal. Next, I had a comment about the earbud policy in the hallways. So currently, I believe we have a no earbud policy in the hallways. And I had a student who suggested that one earbud could be used in the hallways so that teachers can be heard and they can listen to whatever they listen to on the earbuds. And I believe that this solution could be taken into consideration in future changes to this or revisions to this. I also had a request for making sure that the volume level in classes are kept to a minimum. And I've noticed this a lot, especially with substitute teachers in the room, that the volume level is very hard to control for the teachers. And I believe that making sure that these, the teachers are controlling this volume level would be great so that the students can hear what they need to hear and they can focus on what they need to in their classes. That's all that I have for you. Thank you.
And thank you, Devin. I'm just curious, have you brought some of these concerns to the principal?
I have not currently, no.
Okay. I mean, no, thank you for bringing them to us, that's fine. But you might also think about, you have these, you're doing a great job representing your student body, I appreciate it very much. But some of these, especially when they can do with concerns or grievances or suggestions, you might also bring them to the principal.
Right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Gonzalez?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, thank you both. I thoroughly enjoy your reports, so it's, they're encouraging, so thank you both. I would like to just say Happy New Year. I hope everyone, all our staff and students had a relaxing winter break and are ready to, you know, you know, put the nose back to the grindstone. I know it's a bit, you know, I went back to work after a couple weeks off, you know, I understand. So I did want to remind folks that the 2023 Legislative Positions Handbook is available on the BSBA website. I believe we typically get hard copies. I'm not sure we've gotten hard copies last couple years, but I know we normally do, that do include the new and updated legislative positions that were approved by the 2022 Delegate Assembly in November. I know Mr. Rolls kindly reminded me earlier last year that I didn't provide an out-brief on the Delegate Assembly. I think I was right before the annual convention, the week before that. But anyway, so figured better, late was better than never. But all of the legislative positions that we reviewed, they were all approved by the majority of the Delegate Assembly, so they're all included in the 2023 Handbook.
Thank you.
I wanted to, I guess, advocate and remind the board that we, I think it'd be a good idea for us to schedule our first board training session with the SBA now that we have our new superintendent at the helm, since that is the final part of the superintendent search package process that we paid for. So I know that their training sessions book up pretty quickly, so I would recommend we take advantage of that and reach out to them to coordinate that. I would also like to request that our Y Street Youth Reps and the Rev Your Bev campaign be invited to make a presentation at the next meeting, if that was desirable, and that we include on the next agenda a discussion item to review a proposed update to our wellness policy. It's part of their campaign, what they're looking at, which I know, I think I talked about at the last meeting, and I forwarded it all to you previously, so for consideration. And then I would also like to request an agenda item at our next meeting to discuss generating a new superintendent evaluation tool. At the BSBA Convention in November, I did attend one of the, one of the training sessions on, it was on customizing your superintendent evaluation. It was led by two board members from, I forget specifically which division, but they joined a new board and had, I don't remember if they had a new superintendent, they might have as well, but they initiated a process to customize their tool, or the tool that they use. And so there were a number of things. It was a very well-rounded approach. They did surveys, like with all stakeholders, they did 360 surveys. They even like hired a consultant, which I don't know if necessarily that's, you know, anyway, that's just what they did. And they developed like tailored criteria and metrics for providing like, and, you know, a well-rounded and effective tool. So anyway, I think it'd be a good idea to discuss, right? I know that's on our agenda, or, you know, our calendar events for the year, and I'd be happy to lead the discussion if so desired, based on some of the materials I picked up at the convention. So anyway, there you have it. And then lastly, I just wanted to give a shout out to all of our teachers who provide such a safe and loving environment for our students. I had a couple examples. So yesterday, I got an email from my son's teacher about my son arriving at school, highly distressed about what he thought was the loss of his water bottle. He thought he lost it on the bus or something. Anyway, so she sent me an email to let me know that, you know, he thought he lost it, and if I wanted to like make some phone calls throughout the day. He was actually delighted to return to daycare after school and find it waiting for him. So he didn't lose it. But the fact that she took time out of her very busy day to send me an email about a water bottle really just blew my mind. And I also, another example, both of my children wanted to workbooks for Christmas. I was like, this is a silly workbook, silly present. I was at Barnes and Noble, like sending snapshots of workbooks to teachers, it's like getting recommendations. Anyway, they were delighted to receive them. They've enjoyed doing workbooks in the car as entertainment. And I just, I wanted to share that because, you know, the biggest dream I have for my kids is that they develop a love of learning and want a desire to become lifelong learners. And clearly, our King George educators are doing that. So I just want to say thank you for the positive impressions that you're all leaving. And that concludes my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Ms. Huck?
Yes, and I will try not to go long because I'm relatively disjointed in my thinking, only because there is so much happening in each of our responsibility areas. And, you know, I think perhaps we all feel this way, you know, we are looking at this piece, and then this piece, and then this piece. And I want to thank Dr. Boyd for bringing the plan, the comprehensive plan to us tonight because that really does provide a focus, a focus in terms of structure for our roles as A focus in terms of structure for our roles as well as community roles. That plan is developed, as many of you know, because you're on the committees, the committees are taken from the community as well as the staff. It truly is a comprehensive process. So it's not just Dr. Boyd sitting in his office writing up, you know, writing on the walls and coming up with a plan. It truly is a wide-ranging over a period of time. And, you know, we look at it, as we have done tonight, thank you very much. But we also need to be thinking ahead. I mean, this one is through '27. And that seems like a long way away, but it's not. So we need, we need to be looking at the preparation as we review each piece and looking at what communities we have missed, perhaps. Have we checked all the voices from the community? And I'd like us to go back and do at least a cursory check of those committees and the composition. And maybe during the course of this four-year, bring some of those folks back together and say, here's where we are. Has this accomplished what you've wanted as a committee? And not to add any responsibilities to anybody else, because I'm going to speak to that in a minute. I do think the community needs to know how important that comprehensive plan is, every voice, especially the students. The second piece is, one of the things that I did take time to do over the break, was to go back and look at the chart that several of our staff developed about the roles and responsibilities of our staff members. And again, the mind was a bit boggled, because each person in that building has a long list. And that's just the things that you write down. That doesn't include the people that you see every day and the phone calls that you make and all the correspondence. I am concerned, the load that we're putting on our staff. We, our school board office is a bare minimum in terms of the meeting the requirements that are needed to run a division. We're not a large division, but we're not a tiny division either. There are lots of pieces to make these wheels turn. And I want us to make sure that our staff is not overwhelmed. And I know that's part of the wellness thinking and the process, but it's important. We, you know, we look at our educators and our paras and certainly our bus drivers, making sure that we've got, that they are not overwhelmed, that they are doing their job with enough time to process it. We need to make sure that our folks at the school board office have that time also. Those roles and responsibilities are vast. And we may need to look at providing clerical assistance or support or enlarging volunteer potential. So again, not to add any more to your test, but Dr. Boyd, as we talked about the other day when we were in your office, thinking about how we can expand participation of the community to ease the burdens of our staff members. The example was, for example, the homeschool community. And as Mr. Rolls and I discussed, trying to look at perhaps involving community participation in this area. Perhaps seeing what the homeschool community might desire from us and what we can expect from the homeschool community. That's just one example of a responsibility that might be shared, either by liaisons or volunteer work or whatever. But I think it's an area we need to make sure we don't forget. The other thing is that I had a discussion with the officer in charge, and my apologies, I don't know his rank. He works with the Coast Guard Sea Cadets. And it is a wonderful group of youngsters. Mr. Franks might know more about it than I do. But they are eager to expand both the opportunities for the students and the school. So I'm wondering if I can get you his information and name, and he might present to the school board about the Coast Guard Sea Cadets. Would that be okay? And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huck. Mrs. Hoover, Ms. Hoover?
I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to serve our community. And I'm looking forward to all the great things that are going to be coming this year.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rolls?
Well, it's getting close to my bedtime, so I'll keep this short. So always great to see the King George Education Foundation, how generous they are, providing additional educational opportunities for students. I mean, I would have killed at that age to go to Space Camp. That's what a great, great thing that they're paying for there. Yeah, so like I said, I'm very jealous. But also, hopefully for the new year, I'm glad to be back and looking forward to all things that we'll be able to do together this year. And, you know, welcoming new superintendent. Not so new, but you know, that making it official now looks great. And welcome to Ms. Hoover as well. Looking forward to it. That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Can I have one thing? Matt, you can go to Space Camp as an adult. I have a friend who went for his 40th birthday.
Relive your childhood. All right, I have a couple of things. First of all, Happy New Year to everybody, and welcome, Ms. Hoover. We're sure glad you're with us. And also, the King, the Potomac Elementary School, when they did the Pledge of Allegiance, thank them for that, that was good. In fact, they were here early and thought they missed it. That was rather cute. They came in and they thought, oh, we missed it. They were just standing there. But they were willing to wait and then do it later. And the song was fabulous. I don't, you know, the last year, this last year that I've been on the board, that's the first time I've heard that. I love that. Yeah, the singing. And then the Space Camp, oh my goodness, that really was wonderful. And the presentation, and then also all the people that support that, which is really good. And Missursky, thank you so much for that report about the health, the health options, health insurance options. I mean, that was, you did an excellent job and all the work that you put into things like that, we just appreciate it so much. So thank you for that. Also, just wanted to let you know, I visited King George Elementary School for several hours last week. And that was, that was only the second time I'd visited. I should have visited more, but I haven't. But it was, I was very impressed. We went into every classroom just to visit with Mr. Monroe. And it was, I was impressed. One of the things I was impressed about was the discipline. It was very good. And I also visited Potomac Elementary twice. I was at the Spelling Bee this morning, and it was, it was very good. I appreciate it. And although I had to leave a few minutes before the end, so I had to ask, seeing as who the winner was, but she said it ended well. So again, thank you to everybody. And now do I have a motion to go into closed meeting?
I move that pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3711.a.1, for the purpose of discussion, consideration, and prospective candidates for employment, assignment of substitute stipends, resignations, terminations, and retirements of the employees of the school board, that we go into closed session.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're now in closed session. Do I need to? Long day. Do we have a motion to return to open session and certify?
I move that the King George County School Board return to open session and certify that pursuant to State Code 2.2-3712.D., only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened or heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
I second, and certify.
Certify.
Certify. All right, we now, oh, I'm sorry, we...
All in favor?
Yeah, all in favor, sorry. All in favor of the items that were discussed in closed session?
The return to open session. So you...
All those in favor returning to...
Open session.
Open session. Say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Sorry. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, no, you got to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, do we have a motion to approve all the personnels that were presented in the closed session?
I move we approve all the recommended personnel actions in closed session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now, we will, do I have a motion?
Or should say the motion, you know, motions approved or not, right, for the record?
Yeah, you said aye, motion was approved.
Let me just state it.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We are now adjourned.